Thank you, Liz. I'll take a motion to adjourn from executive session and to reopen the public meeting. Is there a motion? Trustee Golio, second. Trustee Kay, all in favor? Okay. Meeting will come to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag and a prayer by Trustee O'Donnell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tomorrow, we honor our veterans, worthy men and women, who gave their best when they were called upon to serve and protect our country. We thank them for their unselfish service in the struggle to preserve our freedom and our safety. We honor them for the hardships they faced and for the sacrifices they made. May we think of our veterans not just tomorrow, but all year round. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jeff. That was beautiful. And good evening, everybody. Welcome to Village Hall. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, November 10, 2015. Just a couple of minor things here outlined in terms of the agenda tonight, which is pretty straightforward. First of all, I'm going to move item number six, which is basically a presentation that the board is going to be seeing for the first time from the Dobbs Ferry Garden Club regarding a Blue Star Memorial Plaque at Waterfront Park. It's the first time we've seen this idea, and rather than have them sit around during the entire meeting, I'm going to move that up actually as a presentation. So we'll get to that first just after courtesy of the floor. We do have a public hearing tonight, which we will open, and we'll give some background as to consider a local law adding a chapter to the village code for the private pilot residential on-street parking permit program. I know a number of you are here tonight to address and give input at this public hearing. Again, we'll give some background. This is certainly not the first public hearing that we're going to have on this particular item. It's an important item, but we're just sort of starting that process tonight. And then we'll get to courtesy of the floor. And I think everything else is straightforward. Before we start, I want to issue a special statement. I don't know if all of you saw this, but there was a letter written in the Enterprise two weeks ago on October 29th from a resident. And I have never responded to, over the course of a lot of years, when your mayor, you get a lot of things written in the paper about you and actions at the board day, and I have never responded to one, and I'm certainly not going to start now. But this particular letter was written in such a tone and had such factual inaccuracies and really was an attack not only on myself, but just the whole process of the board and an issue within the village that I feel that a response is definitely required just to make sure that the facts are out there. I'm not going to mention any person who had written the letter, but if you saw it, you know what I'm talking about. It had to do with a small hump, a raised walkway that, or crosswalk that the village has installed across Briery Road at the intersection of Ashford Avenue, which was referred to in this person's letter as a construction project. To be clear, over the years, the DTW Department has created many small humps, raised curves, or modified road rate throughout the village to redirect stormwater runoff towards catch basins and away from private property, or sometimes these actions are taken to slow down traffic. In this case, this action was taken to create a small hump, raised crosswalk, to eliminate a major flooding problem that was taking place for several residents in the Briery Road area, which I can confirm to you that they have all confirmed over the years, over the last year, year and a half that this was originally done, has solved the problem. What's happened is, over the years, Ashford Avenue has been repaved a number of times, and it happens with a lot of roadways around here, and we're all familiar with this. As those roadways get higher, the catch basins don't catch the water, and in this case, water would pour into these properties every time it rained, and it's solved the problem. It's also had the unintended positive effect of slowing traffic down that enters from Briery off of Ashford Avenue, which is a good thing. In this letter, the resident mentioned a federal investigation was ongoing about this small hump, which the village knows nothing about. The village is aware of comments from the New York State Department of Transportation, which did point out the need to comply with the American with Disabilities Act so that handicapped individuals are able to cross. So it is a small hump, a raised walkway. So many months ago, the New York State Department of Transportation met with the village's DPW superintendent, met with the village's professional traffic consultant. I will also add that the village's traffic committee was involved in this little project. The village's engineer was involved, the village's police department, the fire department, public safety departments, everybody that would have anything to do with public safety and making the decisions within the village was involved in looking at this particular The New York State Department of Transportation did have some minor comments regarding this raised walkway, which included striping, and I don't know how many of you drive by there, but it has, the village has done that. It did stripe it. And it was going to look at wheelchair access and get back to the village. That was many, many months ago. We've not heard back from the New York State Department of Transportation, except that village attorney and our superintendent of DPW did contact the DOT just about a week and a half ago, and they'd actually forgotten about this. They weren't aware that there was any problems left. They knew they had sent somebody out and looked at it. They were asking us why we were calling them, actually, because we wanted to make sure that, you know, everything had been followed up properly. They said it seemed fine to them, but let's double-check, which they're going to do and get back, and we're still waiting to hear back from them. And certainly, if the New York State Department of Transportation says, you know, you need to modify this thing a little bit for handicap access, that will be done. But it doesn't appear as if that needs to be done. All the village professionals that are involved in this believe the small road hump is completely safe, and it's actually a benefit to all the residents of the village. You know, when the village can do something that's simple, that doesn't cost a lot of money, that's going to prevent people's property from flooding or any other natural problems like that, the village does it. It makes a lot of decisions like this every year. The village can't solve every problem. We can't spend a million dollars to solve every problem, so, you know, people who live at Pietro Place know the big problem down there. There's not much the village can do about it. But when the village can do something about it, and we're all good neighbors about it, we try to help each other out, it doesn't matter if it's Briery or Clinton Avenue or wherever it is, we all realize that, you know, people need some help sometimes, and the village can do it, we as taxpayers can help each other out. And that's what this is about, too. So, anyway, I just wanted to clear up the facts of this and to say that, you know, anyone that's interested, if you're really interested in this, I would encourage you to drive down to Briery and drive over this little hump and see it for yourself. Some of the other things mentioned in this letter about the way meetings are run and how emails, we have been in contact with this resident, we have met with this resident. I'm very happy to show every email I've written back to this resident. It's part of the public record. You can fold if you want. I wouldn't want to show you the rest, the letters, though, from this resident, because it has some bad, you know, language in it, and we wouldn't really want you to see those things, so. Anyway, those are the facts, and I'll leave it at that. We will go now to courtesy of the floor, and then we'll get to our presentation from the Garden Club, and then we'll do the public hearing. So is there anyone that cares to address the board? Yes, Maureen.
Thank you. Marie McKellar, Three River Crest Way. And I want to thank and to compliment Merle. Please turn the microphone on. Okay. I will return it back. Thanks. Thank you. Is that better?
Yeah.
Marie McKellar, Three River Crest Way. And I want to thank and compliment the Garden Club and Merle Hubner for what I think is going to be a terrific presentation, but I haven't seen it, but I think it's really good they're doing this. I am president and the president of Dobbs Ferry Waterfront Park Incorporated, and we have an advisor, Lisa Buchenheimer, who is a landscape architect and works with the city. She's on the payroll of the New York City Parks Department, and this is one of her fields of expertise. So Lisa would very much like to contact Merle and just work with her. We've already had one meeting with Merle in the past, and I think it'd be terrific if this could just be a relationship that would continue between the friends and between the Garden Club. So I will ask Lisa to contact Merle then. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Maureen. Thank you. Anybody else care to address the board? Yes, sir.
Mike Merrill, Three River Elm Street. First, I'd like to say that I'm happy to see that we're starting to address River Town Square early and setting up a SWAT team. Secondly, and more importantly, talking about the High Street tree removal project, we were looking to spend $37,500 from the Rec. Trust account, which is, comes from development of new apartments. It would be interesting, both for me and probably for a lot of other people in the village, to know how many apartments that takes to provide the maintenance funds to do 37,500 of tree removal at High Street. And as a corollary, how many people are in those units that are hypothetically entitled to the use of the new recreational facility? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I'm not sure how to answer that one. Anybody else care to address the board? Yes, sir.
I'm Andy Luce. I'm the writer of the letter. Fascinating. Much of what you said was false. I told the village in June that you had received a letter from the federal government about this investigation. They called me in August and told me that it had been completed, had been sent back to Washington, D.C. for a final ruling. This construction project hasn't solved any flooding problems. There's no evidence of that, and you referred this as a small hump. I'm an engineer, and according to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, there's nothing small about it. Because outside of their specifications, their recommendations, 40 residents stepped up when this thing first came into our neighborhood and complained and received no response whatsoever. So I got involved later on, and really, you know, based on my engineering background, I wasn't really buying what was being said. There were false statements. Nothing's been solved. There's a quarter mile of downslope from Briery Road into that intersection. Nothing's been done about that, and that's the source of the flooding. So I'll have additional follow-up about this.
I'm sure you will. I'm sure you will. The 40 residents have not contacted the village. You and one other person have. That's it. Although we've heard from a number of other residents who no longer have flooding problems. And Mr. Luce, I know you disagree.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Is one of you a beneficiary of this?
What? Anyone else care to address the board? Yes, sir.
I'm afraid I'm going to be very boring.
Yeah, yeah. That's a tough one to follow.
You never bore him, have you?
Oh, yes, yeah. I'm actually here as a member of the Chamber of Commerce in the village of Dobbs Ferry, in a small group of younger people that work very hard to get this thing off the ground. And we actually are all legal and papers and a bank account and everything, and we're looking to kind of make ourselves known by getting involved right away. And I think our first opportunity may be a holiday tree lighting this year. What we're looking to do is expand from previous years, and we're looking at doing a Dobbs Holiday pop-up. And the idea is to take a space. We're looking at 75 Main Street, which might work. We have to clear a few things with the building department first, so we'll make sure we do that before we're inviting people in. But we're inviting people from 145, local artists. We've reached out to River Arts. We've got a fabulous new resident of the village who's very engaged in these kinds of things, who has contacted people who do the Grand Central Station stuff, and it's like tastes of something and all kinds of neat things. So we're hoping that we can get people lined up, that we can get use of the space. But my main thing here is to reach out if there are artists, craftsmen, vendors who might have interesting things that'd be great for holiday sales. Feel free to contact me. You can call me at 914-693-5093. And we'll pick you on the list, and if this thing happens, we'd love to have people involved. Adele from Curious on the Hudson, we've reached out to her, because I think she's done some great things down there, would like to get her energy up into this as well. And we will, I'm assuming, have a tree lighting celebration on the first Saturday of December.
Summer 5th.
The summer 5th.
Yeah.
So we're looking to build on that and have some more fun stuff happening. And this year, we'd like to give a special reach out to carolers. We'd like to get more carolers. We'd like to have thousands of carolers walking up and down the street. So if anybody's interested in doing that, just let me know, and we're going to have the chamber up for our involvement this year, and I think that's going to make more money. Thanks.
Great, Patty. That's great. And just on that, that's such a, you know, positive feedback there. It's so, it's so good to see that there is a vibrant chamber that really seems to be developing now, and it sounds like a lot of the local merchants are getting involved, and that's fantastic, what a, what a big, big difference that'll make. So that's really, we'd like to hear more about, you know, their activities, and if they'd like to come sometime to make a more formal presentation, which is great, but...
What I was trying to do is, yeah, trying to get some of their two young guys who've gotten really engaged in this, who've done amazing work on it. So maybe I could try and get them to come to one of the meetings, so you guys can meet them.
That'd be great. Okay. Thanks, Patty.
Mayor?
Yes, Jeff.
I know one of the things that the friends of the, I'm going to wait for Patty so he can hear me.
Patty, pay attention.
Patty. I would ask you questions. I know. The friends of the library have been tossing around doing a pop-up store to sell books before the holidays. I would recommend that you contact them. That might be a perfect match of two people that were looking for space, so if you would do so.
Very well, and that happens to be where we usually set them up for the festivals.
Exactly.
So you're familiar with that location.
They know it well. I push books up there. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Thanks, Jeff. Anybody else care to address the board? Okay, great. Thank you very much, thank you very much for your comments, some of which we'll address a little bit further on, I think, when we, when we consider some action here, or we get to some of the items. Okay, so as I said, we'll start, which was originally going to be action item number six, and move it up to presentations. We have with us tonight the co-president and representatives of the Dobbs Ferry, of the Garden Club of Dobbs Ferry, who are wanting to talk to or just present to the board for the first time, an idea which is essentially to honor the servicemen and women of our armed forces, past, present, and future, with a Blue Star Memorial Marker. It is one of the goals of the National Garden Club to locate a Blue Star marker in every town across America. The members of the Garden Club of Dobbs Ferry would like to honor our armed forces with this unique tribute. The history of the Blue Star Memorial Marker began in 1944, and we've got a little bit more information on it. But this is the first time that, that we're seeing this idea, and as Marie McKellar had mentioned, too, I think there's been some discussion about this, but we just wanted to see the idea. And we have Susan Kosick, and I don't know if Madeline's here tonight, but Susan's the co-president of the Garden Club, and I see that Merle Hubner is also here as well. So we'd love to just hear more about this, a few more details. We're not going to make any final decisions tonight. We will take input from the idea that Lisa Gugan, she's a wonderful architect, landscape architect, would look at this, and we'll get some input from some others, perhaps the Recreation Committee and things like that, before we make final decisions. So this will be a collective decision, but it sounds like a wonderful idea. There's a lot of things that could come out of this. And so Susan, I'll let you come to the mic here and tell us a little bit more about it, please.
Good evening. I have Merle Hubner's here this evening as well. I was asked to, I had planned to come, but also was asked to come this evening to answer questions, so I didn't expect to give a presentation. And I think, Mr. Mayor, that you've mentioned sort of the heart of the idea. The concept of Blue Star marker really dates back to the First World War, when if you have a serviceman or woman in your family, serving in the armed forces, you put a banner in your window that had a blue star on it, and if it were a deceased member, you put a banner in your window that had a gold star. And that has been around in our country for a long time. And I've not been a member of the Garden Club for very many years, but when I first joined, I knew that it was a mission of the National Garden Clubs to have a memorial marker for servicemen and women in every town across the country. And along with the marker, the idea is, because we're a garden club, is to have a small garden surrounding that, and that is, that is the goal of our club right now. The marker itself is really quite small. It's about 12 inches by 21 inches, so it's only about that size. And our plan was to work with Gary Gardner, who's looking for a stone, really from Dobbs Ferry rather than planning a memorial marker. We just thought it would be so fitting, just to have a natural stone, and Gary's been trying to find the right stone, and I'm absolutely certain that he will, if in fact you agree to our proposal. In addition to the marker being quite small, our thinking, and we've been thinking about this for, I think, about a year or so, right, Merle, of where such a tribute might be placed. And so ultimately, we thought, especially after seeing the beauty of Waterfront Park, that perhaps it would be right in front of the flagpole there. And currently, the Dobbs Ferry Beautification Committee, and Merle's the chair, and I'm on that committee as well, we maintain that small area, plant, well, there are roses there now, and we put annuals every year. So we would work jointly with the Beautification Committee and the Garden Club to maintain it and also to make it even prettier than it is right now. So we don't have aspirations for an enormous, something that needs a landscape architect. We were pretty simple-minded, but we're certainly happy to work collaboratively, complete with anybody. That's, it's pretty straightforward, just thank you to the men and women who have served, who are serving now, and those who will serve in the future. And we just thought it would be lovely for our town to have a new stone.
Well, it's so apropos for, you know, what Trustee O'Donnell, his prayer about was in Veterans Day tomorrow. The timing of this is all good. Does anyone have any questions for Susan or all? Pretty straightforward. So, you know, we're hearing and seeing this, we're really hearing it more for the first time, so, you know, it'd be good, we'll have some collaboration here. And, you know, this sounds like a wonderful idea. I think everyone will want to support it, but let's make sure we get input, and thank you so much for coming. I want to thank you and Merle and everybody on the Garden Club, because you're, you know, it gets to the Beautification Committee for all the work that you do. You know, Merle, I've been a very big supporter of the Beautification Committee. We've increased the budget, and it's never enough for Merle, but, and that comes out of the operating budget. It comes out, she fights for, she fights for that, but it comes out of the operating budget, so we're all contributing to that. But the work, just everything that you do around town, it makes such a big difference, the pots and the plantings, and it's just tremendous, and you don't get enough credit for that. But thanks for that, and thanks for presenting your ideas.
Yeah, I just have one quick question, because you were saying Waterfront Park. Some people have pointed out that there's a lot of memorials down there, and I'm not, I'm not against it, but would you consider putting this someplace else, like Memorial Park or Waterfront Park, the place that you guys might really want to do this?
We did consider quite a few other locations, actually, and we thought that because we've already have garden plants up there, and it was by the flagpole, and it was at the entrance to the park, and I do realize that there are many memorials there, that perhaps this was just a good way to begin that entrance, and it would, our plan was that it would face the railroad station, so as you walked by or passed it, we just, we're looking for someplace that was really, really highly visible. And as I say, it's small, it's lower than the ground, it's really not in your face at all. But yes, we would be happy to consider other places. We did look at the corner of Broadway and Livingston, that triangle there, but understand that's, that really belongs to the state, and that just seemed way too complicated. So we just thought the flagpole was just like the perfect place, so.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Okay. So we'll now get to the public hearing. To start matters, I'll take a motion to open the public hearing, which will be to consider a local law adding a chapter to the village code for the pilot residential on-street parking permit program. Is there a motion? Trustee Golio, second. Trustee Russillo, discussion, all in favor? Okay. We'll open the public hearing, and we'll look forward to some comments here. Just real quickly, though, as background, I think most of you that are here tonight are fairly familiar with this initiative. This did start some time ago, and Betsy Delargy was very, very much involved with it, but this board has been involved, and other members of the community have been involved. Essentially, just very recently, actually, the governor of New York signed off on a bill that had been passed by both houses of the New York State Legislature to pass, allow Dobbs Ferry to, or pass a home rule that would allow Dobbs Ferry to essentially add a new local law in its village code on vehicle and traffic's residential parking, and essentially a pilot program that would give the village the legislative ability to limit non-resident on-street parking. And this would be for designated streets, and particularly streets that are in the downtown That's really the bottom line, and it really is about, you know, sort of finding ways to create parking capacity for residents. However, we can't forget that we have businesses, we have institutions, we have churches, we have programs, we have visitors, and part of these laws do require that you do have to set aside a certain percentage of your on-street parking to accommodate visitors and other people. And so obviously, the tricky part of this type of a law is to find the right balance, the balance between, you know, helping the residents as much as we can, but also understanding that there are other things that we need, we need to make parking available for other people. In the, I don't know if everybody was able to pick up in the podium, if you weren't, there is a, there is the proposed local law, which is just really a starting point. And I'm just going to read it through very, very quickly as background, and then I'll, Betsy, if you want to add in, or Darius, add anything from your side, and then we can start and take some comment, because this is about taking public comment, and I know there will be some differences of opinions, and we need to kind of bring all this together and think about it. This, we will not be making any decisions tonight. This will not be the first public hearing on this. We're going to be very, very diligent about this and think it through as a, as a community. So the law, basically as it stands right now, is being presented. This is, again, just a draft, is it would be Section 290-46, residential parking. The owners or tenants of a residential dwelling whose primary residence is located on a street in the residential parking is eligible to obtain a residential parking permit, limited to two per household. Applicants must submit a valid driver's license, registration, and assigned application. Tenants will be required to provide a current copy of their lease, in addition to a signed affidavit from their landlord attesting to residency. That's A. B. The residential parking zone shall consist of the following streets: Oak Street, from Broadway to Main Street; Elm Street, from Broadway to Main Street; Chestnut Street, from Broadway to Main; Walnut Street, from Broadway to Livingston Avenue; Hatch Terrace, from Broadway to Walnut Street; Palisade Street, from Cedar Street to Chestnut Street. Sorry? Are we good? Riverside Place and the portion of Draper Lane owned by the village of Dobbs Ferry. So those are the designated streets specifically.
There's also, which was not on, Cedar Street, from Main Street to 1,750 feet west of Palisade Street.
Thanks, Betsy. C. Residents whose primary residence is located on the above-mentioned streets shall be permitted to park on the prescribed streets for more than four hours, Monday through Friday, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Those not residing on the above-mentioned streets shall be permitted to park for not more than four hours, Monday through Friday, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. D. Residential parking permits shall be valid for a period of one year from January 1st to December 31st, at a cost to be determined by the Board of Trustees. E. Permits shall be affixed to the top-left interior of the front driver's side window of the vehicle. Residents who appear as scofflaws on the village records are not eligible to obtain a residential parking permit. F. Residential parking permits are not transferable to another person or to another vehicle. Violation of this section shall be subject to a fine set forth by the Board of Trustees, and the violator shall not be eligible to obtain a new residential parking permit for a period of one year from the date of the violation. G. Vehicles displaying a valid New York State handicap parking permit shall be exempt from residential parking permit requirements. And H. Violations of this section shall be subject to a fine set forth by the Board of Trustees, and it will have an effective date. F, residential parking permits are not transferable to another person or to another vehicle. Violation of this section shall be subject to a fine set forth by the Board of Trustees, and the violator shall not be eligible to obtain a new residential parking permit for a period of one year from the date of the violation. G, vehicles displaying a valid New York State handicap parking permit shall be exempt from residential parking permit requirements. And H, violations of this section shall be subject to a fine set forth by the Board of Trustees. And it will have an effective date, the law shall take effect upon adoption on that date. So that's the draft that is being presented today. It certainly won't be the final, but it gives everybody sort of a baseline to work from. So, Betsy, would you like to add any other comments at all, or background, or Darius, do we need to present anything more to the residents, and then we can open it up for public comment?
Well, I think that about covers everything that I have. Are there people that want to come up and?
We didn't put in any, we didn't put in any specific fines, but you probably should consider that in this law, and maybe push it back to 175, which is our fee section, so everyone is aware. We didn't want to put fines out there yet until people talked about it, but something that you probably talk about and include in this law.
And I also think that knowing this was our first public hearing, everything is very broad, it can always be made less restrictive.
Right. Okay, good points. And I want to say, this is obviously, whenever a board is considering a change to the village code, it's a big deal. So we're going to take the right amount of time to do this, we're going to listen to everybody. We'd like you to, if you can, limit your comments tonight to three to four minutes, if you can do that. In these kind of cases, what really works well, and I know we've heard from some of you already, is to write in your concern. If you can write them to the board, or to Liz Drake, or the village clerk, and she will distribute to them. But that's a really good way for us to get your ideas and your opinions. We will get them, and we will read them, and it'll be part of the record, and it'll be part of the process. Okay, great. So who would like to start? Anybody?
Go for it.
Ed Hennessy, I'm from Bellway Avenue. I've been an advocate of this law for a number of reasons. My daughter lives on Palisade Street, and was into a number of problems. I've owned a three-family house down here, and I've lost a couple of tenants due to the parking issues, and have gotten very severe over the last 18 months to two years. And I had a recent possible tenant change their mind because they drove through the neighborhood a couple of times, and said, you know, "Street parking isn't, you know, a real viable alternative." So the residents of that street, when we went and got a petition put together, there wasn't one that objected to it whatsoever. Everybody's much in favor, they realize that they're asking for something that, you know, some people don't think they should have, but would you leave your house in the morning and come back early, even if it's after work? You can't even park on the same street. It's a serious issue, and I'm very happy that the board has addressed it, and we're at this final stage, hopefully get this passed, and I'll answer any questions anybody might have. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Linda Jo?
Hi, I'm Linda Jo Clack. I live in Dobbs Ferry, and I'm the director of Canadian Nursery School, which is owned by South Questing Church. I'm also a member of the session of that church. I understand the reasoning for many people for wanting this law, but I think that the area that it covers, there's a lot of differentiation between, say, Palisade Street and perhaps Oak Street, where there are two homes on Oak Street. So a maximum of four permits with an Oak Street address would be given. So what I'm asking is for consideration, and perhaps that four hours be extended a little longer, because I have employees at the nursery school, the Days of Wonder has employees, that would need parking for a little longer than four hours, because that would barely, barely cover one session of the school. And so, you know, in further discussions, I would like to talk about extending that a little bit, or perhaps even, I know that, I don't know what studies have been done, how many actual commuters are on Oak Street or Elm. I know that Steve, Tilly, and Elizabeth Martin are concerned for their own employees on Elm, so that, I know employees on Main Street, because I watch them park, and then they go down to Main. I don't know what their hours are, I don't know, I just know what my staff hours are. So just to think about, where are people going to park if they work in Dobbs Ferry? I don't think you have a place for that. And so that should come under consideration as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda Jo. Good comments. Anybody else have any comments, or?
Hi, my name is Yoko Thurston, 70 Livingston Avenue. My husband, Tom, has been pressifying with Donna about the Livingston Avenue, but I wanted to bring this, our concern to this hearing, that we have this parking limitation 9 to 12, but we have two cars, and we have been parking on the Walnut Street, Hatch Terrace, whenever we can find, we would park there. And our residence, our house is built 1893, and we don't have any parking. So we have been already dealing with this car issues, and we can't park in front of our home anyway, for a long time, because we commute to the city to work. So I'd like to bring your attention to address this concern, that some, and also, our residence, as far as I know, our residence is the only one on Livingston Avenue which doesn't come with any parking, so that's the concern. Thank you.
I would just like to point out, one of the reasons Livingston, we tried to get Livingston included in this, but we were told by the state, that's what we'll tell you also, that because there's already restricted parking there, we couldn't include it in this. Because you have, no, no, I know, we're trying to find a way to work it out with you guys. I'm just trying to explain to the public why, because Livingston would have been a prime street for commuter parking. But commuters don't park there, because there's already a 9 to 12 restriction there. But this hurts the people who, you park on another street, because you can't park there, and you are technically in the troubled area. So I don't know, you know, I don't know if we can, if they're allowed to get permits or not. I don't know what the state law would do with that.
No, you're outside of the zone. Right, Livingston is not included.
Right.
Thank you. Patty?
If I understand, and it's always possible that I don't, the zone limits really which streets we could have the designations on. I'd be surprised that we couldn't have accommodations where specific distances from outside the zone would be permitted to get parking in the zone. You know, her situation is, is perfect for, she should be included and be allowed to get that. And I understand Linda Jo's issue. I don't know what the solution to that is. I mean, we don't have a lot of businesses on the side streets. You know, maybe that one, you've got the Historical Society, you've got, you're going to have the overseer's house, I don't know if those are issues, but I think those could always be added later, if you found there was the need for those things. It could always be extended to, you know, a certain number of parking spaces for those operations, those institutions that are on the streets. You do have, I think you want to add the word "zone" after that parking, residents' parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, "zone" needs to be in there. And it makes an issue of, you know, the tenants have to provide proof, I'm assuming that homeowners, their driver's license will be adequate? If their license shows that they live on Elm Street, that they'll be, they won't have to find a landlord or something to verify that they are allowed to do that, right? And then my last question, it says for four hours, and that kind of talks about in the week. I'm assuming it's four hours at one time. Like, you can't park for five hours, but if you parked for four hours each day, that'd be okay. Is four hours in a day, or four? What is it? Streets for more than four hours Monday through Friday?
Or consecutive.
You won't even come back as a.
I'm the one who'll get the.
Meniscus.
Well, I think some language would need to be cleaned up on this, for sure, but that's the four hours.
We can add it per day.
That would make sense. Any consecutive problem?
In those situations, for an exception, right, not that we want to open up to everybody, I think somebody like you, where, you know, you don't have a driver or something, something we should consider on nearby streets, because that is a little bit of an unique situation. So something, and that's good input, exactly why we're having a public hearing, so thank you for sharing.
And the four to 12, Betsy, the restriction on Livingston is to discourage?
I'm sorry.
Can you, the four, yeah, the commuter.
Right.
Yeah.
There's no parking for nine.
Right.
Okay.
The board wanted to consider the timing, too. We put seven to seven, but there may be, you know, people are out of work and may go to dinner in town on a Friday at six, and, you know, maybe, just something maybe consider uncertain, maybe Friday is less time, or Thursday.
Yeah, but they could park at six, and then, they can park for four hours. You can actually park at, you can park at four and be there for all night, technically. Because you have four hours, then you have any time after seven. Yeah, you can still have three.
So to extend it to Livingston, we'd have to say what?
We can't extend it to.
No, but, so what, Patty, what were you suggesting, then, that people who live there get, are eligible?
People can get the.
Right, that's what I meant.
Of the zone, yeah.
A certain hundred feet or something, of the zone?
You're triggered, yeah, because the zone doesn't get changed, that's what's been approved by the state. But the people who are eligible to get the permit could be people who live on such as, you know, maybe there's three streets affected like this, who live within a certain distance of the zone.
Okay.
Who don't have parking inside. Not, you've got maybe two or three houses.
Right.
Can we do that, or do we have to check with the state on that?
We'll have to check with the state.
And could we do something with employees who?
Well, you see, now you get into something else, because we do have a business district permit.
Right. Right, so those people.
Which is the blue meters and the village parking lots.
So those people could do that.
Yeah, now that's where we get a defeat. Nobody likes to walk that path.
Any other comments from anybody at this time? Yes, Mark? Oh, Freddie? And then Mark?
Fred Karen's, 126 Palisade Street. I'm glad to see that the handicap permits are going to be accepted, and also that each dwelling will have, be able to have two permits. And I was just wondering personally, I happen to have a driveway, and it fits two cars, but it also have five cars at that one particular home. And two permits would not handle the tenants that live in the apartment. My wife and I each have a car, and my brother-in-law and sister-in-law live in the same building. And what happens now is, if they have to go out and they're 86 years old, I have to take a car from my driveway and put it in front of the house, so that when they come home from a doctor's appointment, or whatever, I have to move my car, and they can pull into that space.
But wouldn't they be considered tenants?
Yeah, they're tenants, they can't.
But there's only going to be two permits per household.
No, 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 no. Per unit.
Per unit.
You know, you're right, I had the same.
I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, no, I need to clarify on that, too.
But I'd also like to compliment you guys on going through all this and listening. I know it's quite a project, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Freddie. Uh, Mark?
Mother Rossi, 126 Palisade Street. I just ask the board that please, the fines that you're going to set, make sure they cry high, because let's be real. I mean, there's people that actually, when there is regulations in the street, they choose to leave their car and pay the $20 ticket. If it's going to be $20, it's going to be worth it for them just to go to the train station, get the ticket, and it's fine. So make sure that is, you know, a hundred and above.
Mark, we're going to point you to the Budget Committee. Any other comments from the public at all? Okay, those are really great, thank you. By the way, this isn't being done in a vacuum. Linda Jo and some of the comments here about, you know, employees and workers, the village is also looking at other places where we can add capacity downtown, and areas where we think we have property that isn't being properly utilized, or maybe improperly utilized now. We're having survey work done, you all can think of what some of those areas might be around the DPW, et cetera, but we are looking, while we're doing this, to look at how we can create other capacity for downtown, which might be specifically available for employees to park, employee parking areas, or village staff parking areas, or things of that nature. So it's sort of like, as you know, you can make a decision in one area, but then you push a problem into another area, right? So it's like a, you've got to be careful here, because it's all interconnected. So a lot of that is going on concurrently with this as well, and so it's a big puzzle that we're trying to put together, but this is important. Thanks very much for your comments. At this point, I'm going to, I'm not closing the public.
Take a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to take a motion to adjourn the public hearing, we're going to take some of this input, we may modify this, we're going to take your ideas, we're going to make note of who spoke tonight, and some of the, whether it's Livingston or Palisade, and see how we might be able to address some of the concerns, and we'll come back and repost a second public hearing, which probably won't be the last one either, and we'll let you all know, and we'll have some further discussion. Thanks very much.
Take a look.
So at this point, I'll take a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Trustee Kay, second. Trustee Flynn, discussion, all in favor? Hands will seven, eyes. And thank you all so much for your comments, they were really, really well-delivered and very, very good, very positive. Okay, moving on to action, and the number one is to consider a motion to accept the treasurer's financial reports for August 2015. Jeff Tudor, the village treasurer, has presented to the board, and this is available for anyone who would like to see it, the treasurer's report for August of 2015. I can tell you that no village board has ever gotten as detailed a report, as accurate a report, as this. It's a new thing, and it's a good thing. And Jeff, I want to compliment you on, because this is something you said you were going to deliver, we talked about it, even during the, excuse me, the hiring process, which is something that you felt needed to be done. But the four years I've been here, and I know, I know prior years, this has never been presented like this, so I'm not going to, you know, go through all the details, but essentially, this is a very detailed report on the month's activities of the village. It includes essentially a summary, fund balance summary, which, if you can keep it where it is right now, it's going to be great, but it's early in the year, so we, of course, haven't, we haven't brought in all the money that we're going to bring in, but we haven't spent nearly all of it either, so. But you'll see during the year how the fund balance will change as expenditures go out and receipts come in. It basically shows the balance sheet of the village, revenue control report, and it gives very detailed reports by department, village administration, village clerk, village court, police, fire, building, DPW, everything is in here. There's also some interesting pie charts that give you sort of visually some things that are going on, which are very helpful, and sometimes it's easier to look at those than to, you know, look at something like that. But it's all here. So Jeff, I want to just ask you to give a few words on this, and I think this is something that we expect to go, going forward, and just, you know, for the benefit of the residents and the board, if there's anything in particular you want to mention regarding August, or just in general?
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, August is the quarter-way point through here. I did add a couple of charts this month, which I think make it, like you said, a little bit easier to see graphically. You know, the expenditures by department, you know, it's kind of straightforward and kind of, you know, kind of maybe boring information, but if anybody had, has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
So are there any questions at this time from the board for Jeff, or any comments? Yeah, so this is kind of a, you know, it's a real-time budget report, which is great, and I know that the, yes, Jeff?
I just, I wanted to compliment Jeff tremendously. This is the type of report that we receive from the school board, and I have questions as I was going through. I think it makes more sense now for me to, and they're not properly phrased yet, so I'd love to send them to you and to the rest of the board members to look at particular things and go from there, but great job. Thank you.
Good, thanks, Jeff. And I think, so we'll, this will continue, and it's good work, and I think, I just also want to add that. work, and I think, I, I just also want to add that, um, I think just as a, as a testament to the tremendous improvement in the, in the treasury, uh, department with, with Jeff and Betsy's work, um, that we've seen over the last couple of months, that we're, we're getting, you know, really favorable auditors' report, and I think this year, for the first time since, well, in over four years, uh, the auditors are going to be meeting with the village five months earlier than they have typically in the past, and that's, again, a testament to the preparation that we've done. And you'll hear more about that, I think, in December, we're going to give a, uh, when the auditors are finished, come back, I'm going to give a full report on that. So thanks very much, Jeff, good, good work. Action item number two is to consider a motion to authorize the police chief to sign an intermunicipal agreement with the villages of Elmsford, Hastings-on-Hudson, Irvington, Tarrytown, and the town of Greenberg to form a town-wide special weapons and tactics unit.
This is, this is a, it's, this is a twenty-year, um, project. This is something that's not new. They've, they've had this for many, many years. This is just re-signing, updating the intermunicipal agreement between all the villages and towns in the...
Okay, so this is a, this is a, an agreement that's in existence now?
It is. This is just, um, the last one was executed five years ago. This is just an updated execution of the same IMF.
Oh, I'm sorry. Terri, we need to vote to accept the treasurer's financial report.
Yeah, I was just going to, once you finish this one, then we'll...
Okay, and we'll get back to that. My, my fault.
Sorry, sorry.
Sorry. Okay, so, um, um, this is just renewing an agreement that we've had with these villages, and this is specifically, obviously, related to public safety police. What is special weapons and tactics unit? Is that, is that a unit that's existed for a while?
That's SWAT team, that's a SWAT team, and it's been in existence for many, many years.
Oh, this was the, oh, I already come up with SWAT team earlier, I wasn't quite sure of such a thing. Okay, gotcha, all right. Um, any, any comments from the board or questions at all for the chief? Then I'll take a motion to authorize the chief to sign an intermunicipal agreement with the village of, villages of Elmsford, Hastings-on-Hudson, Irvington, Tarrytown, and the town agreement to form the town-wide special weapons and tactics unit. Is there a motion? Uh, Trustee O'Donnell, second trustee Golio, discussion, all in favor? Passes with seven i's. Thanks, thanks, Betsy. Action item number three is...
But still...
Oh, run back to one. Okay, so just, uh, I need a motion to accept the treasurer's financial report, uh, for August two thousand and fifteen as presented. Uh, trustee Golio, second trustee Flynn, discussion, all in favor? Okay, and that passes with seven i's, we accept the report. Sorry about that. Action item number three is to consider a motion to adopt the resolution reopening section three eighty-four dash D of the retirement and social security law for police officers Michael Maron and Jeffrey G. as set forth in chapter two five-nine laws of two thousand and fifteen. We have that resolution here, which is really from the office of the New York State Comptroller, Dean DeBully, um, resolution reopening section three eighty-four D of the retirement and social security law for Michael Maron and Jeffrey G. as set forth in chapter two fifty-nine. Uh, this was actually at a meeting that we had as a board of trustees, which we had to adopt. There was basically a clerical error here, I think we went back, but we did have to go through a process. These officers are absolutely entitled to this under the law, and we just had a, basically a clerical issue that needed to be squared up, um, and so that has been done, and so we're just sort of adopting this, uh, resolution, um, for this to happen, as I've outlined, with New York State. Anybody have any questions on this for the board at all? Okay, then I'll take a motion to adopt a resolution to reopen section three eighty-four D of the retirement and social security laws for police officers Michael Maron and Jeffrey G. Is there a motion? Trustee Golio, second trustee Cassell, discussion?
Hey, Mayor, can I have a question?
Yes, Bill.
Like you said, I do remember doing this before. Is this something we're going to have to do every year or, no, this is, this is it for this one?
This should be it.
This should be it, okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion, all in favor? That motion passes with seven i's. Action item four is to consider a motion to award the bid for the High Street Tree Removal Project to the lowest bidder, uh, Downs Tree Services Company Incorporated, for amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, as recommended by James Hahn Consulting Engineer, and that the monies will be expended for the village's recreation fund, uh, and will, including the declaration of the village property in question to be a place of passive recreation and open space for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. This is, uh, you know, a very exciting thing that we're, uh, considering tonight. I think, as, as many of you might know, but if you don't know, there is a, there is a history to this, which was essentially the idea of this piece of property, which is bounded by Station Plaza, High Street, and Palisade, essentially as you walk or present down to the train station, eventually the waterfront park. Uh, it's been an area of the, the village property, which has been, has gone neglected for how many years, we don't know, but certainly fifty years. Uh, it's terribly overgrown, uh, there's a lot of very tall, empty, or I should say dangerous trees that have been there for some time, um, so it does present a public, uh, safety hazard and health hazard. It's, it blocks a beautiful view with, and it's a lot of invasive growth. We've had a lot of involvement, we've taken a lot of input on this project. Um, I, I just love the idea of opening it up and, and opening up what will be a, a beautiful new, um, um, river view and, and river, river view and, and, uh, sort of complementing the new beautiful park that we have there as well. But we've involved a lot of people, and, um, I'm going to read to you the proposed resolution here, and then we can have some discussion, so I think everybody will understand what we're, what we're doing. The resolution of the Board of Trustees of Village of Dobbs Ferry awarding the bid for the High Street Project, whereas the village has a strong record of action to reclaim, enhance, and improve village property for passive recreation as a priority for the enjoyment of residents, which when done improves the quality of life in the village of Dobbs Ferry. And whereas these actions include the waterfront park and Little White Church Cemetery projects as examples of passive recreation projects, which have been completed and are of great pride to the community, involving the support and involvement of volunteer committees and community members. And whereas the Board of Trustees believes the proposed work to create an enhanced view shed on the village's property bounded by High Street, Station Plaza, and Palisade Street will be a major enhancement to the village, opening up an expansive new view of the Hudson River and the newly renovated waterfront park, and we begin to transform this property into a more beautiful open space for the enjoyment of all residents, commuters, walkers, recreation enthusiasts, and visitors. And whereas the Board of Trustees asked and received guidance from the Conservation Advisory Board, including the identification of specific trees and growth to be removed as a first phase, to include the removal of large dead trees and growth which currently present a hazard to residents and commuters, which when removed will make for a safer and more healthy environment. And where the C A B has recommended a phased approach to the clearing of additional invasive growth, as well the eventual addition of more appropriate plantings, which could be considered in the future to help the environment. The C A B will help the Board of Trustees and monitor all work considered going forward. And whereas the Village Recreation Commission, Commission has also provided its support for the project as an enhancement to the village, and in particular as an improvement for passive recreation. And as a result, the Board of Trustees declares by this resolution that this property will only be used for passive recreation and open space for the enjoyment and use of the residents of Dobbs Ferry and visitors. And whereas relevant village departments and staff are also in favor of the project as an enhancement, including the superintendent of the Department of Public Works and the village engineer and the interim, interim village administrator. And whereas the village has also received favorable opinion from landscaping experts and professional arborists. And whereas the village duly, duly noticed bids via request for proposal, R F P, opened on November five, two thousand and fifteen, for the project to remove the trees and enhance the views of the Hudson River within the village, and we do have the packet of the detailed, um, bids that were, that were received by the village. And by the way, those bids were, uh, the R F P was constructed exactly along the lines of the advice of the Conservation Advisory Board. Whereas the village received four bids. Now therefore being resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby awards the bid for the removal of trees as outlined in the formal R F P to High Street Removal Project to the lowest bidder, which was Downs Tree Service Company Incorporated, for an amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, as recommended by James Hahn Consulting Engineer. Be it further resolved, the village declaration, uh, of the property in question to be a place of passive recreation and open space for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Be it further resolved, the funding of the project will be from the village's segregated recreation fund, uh, which has been, uh, agreed and supported fully by the Recreation Commission, uh, which is to be used for such purposes of creating and enhancing open space and passive recreation. So that's the, and I wanted to read it in full because there's a lot there, there's a lot of history to this, there's a lot of thought that's gone into it. I'm a big supporter of this, and, uh, and, um, and I hope the board will, will support this. So that's the, uh, that's the resolution. So at this time, I'll ask for a, a motion for the resolution as presented. Trustee Kay, second trustee Russillo, discussion?
I just have one thing. Can we say, whereas the Village Parks and Recreation Commission, can we change that to Parks and?
Is that their, is that what we call them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we'll note that, um, in that paragraph, Liz, uh, we're going to insert Parks, the Village Parks and Recreation Commission?
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to, um, you know, give a shout-out to the C A B, which did a, a lot of work on this and, and the Parks and Recreation Department, but particularly Neil DiPescuall and Nancy Del Marigo, who did a tremendous, tremendous amount of work and dedicated a lot of time and a lot of their expertise, uh, to making this happen, so I want to make sure that they get the credit that they deserve.
Great, Donna, I want to second that, and Neil, I, I thank you so much for the work, and, you know, I was ready to charge ahead on this about a year and a half ago and just tear it all down, but luckily I got pulled back, and, uh, and it's going to be better because we've had more involvement, more people looking at it. And I know you spent a lot of time in there, which is not an easy area to, to maneuver around in there and, and spent so much work in marking the trees, and thank you, and you'll be involved, uh, absolutely going forward, whether it's this board or a future board that wants to take further action to beautify that area. I think it's going to, once this work, first work is done, I think other people want to, they're going to want to see more done there, so. Thanks, Donna, for that and your involvement. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Great, that passes with seven i's. Uh, thanks, Betsy, for getting the bits together, and hopefully we can get working on that immediately.
Absolutely.
Action item number four, we did that. Action item number five is to consider a motion to approve the two thousand and fifteen holiday parking program. This will be from December fifth to December thirty-first, which will provide a ten-dollar parking meter card to the first one hundred individuals who submit receipts for any purchases in the village of Dobbs Ferry totaling fifty dollars or more, and it is limited to one parking meter card per person. Any questions about that? We've done this each year, it's been pretty successful, we're happy with it?
Yeah.
Okay. So on that note then, I'll take a motion to approve the two thousand and fifteen holiday parking program. Trustee O'Donnell, second. Trustee Golio, discussion, all in favor? And that passes with seven i's. And I think the last action item here, which will be action item number six, is to consider a motion to allow the Shabat of the River Towns to construct a menorah display at the intersection of Cedar Street and Main Street from December first to December thirty-first. And we do, as a matter of practice, do need to vote on this as a board. We've checked those dates.
Actually, the dates are, we made that broad because we hadn't heard back on them. It's going to be the first to the fifteenth.
December first to December fifteenth?
Right.
Okay. So those dates are set. Betsy, we're okay with that, no conflicts anywhere else, and I think, uh, well, you know, this is just, we're, we're a tremendously diverse community, and, uh, you know, I'm down there every year to, to light those candles with the rabbi and to, to, to dance around a little bit, it's great, and, uh, we have a tree lighting ceremony that comes in after that, and everybody participates, and we're just a, a really diverse community, and it's great to see that we all embrace and respect each other in different cultures and things like that, and I know I probably shouldn't be saying this with church and state thing, but it's true. So, anyway, is there a motion to allow the Shabat of the River Towns to construct a menorah display on those dates? Trustee, um, Kay, trustee Golio, discussion?
No, Mayor, also, they do, right? They have a nice little spread, they have the lockers, the potato pans, and so, it's, I would encourage everybody to come down, I think.
It's awesome. Uh, all in favor of the motion? Great, that passes with seven i's. Beautiful. Okay, uh, correspondence and claims, um, don't have any, we'll make some announcements, but let's just get to our minutes, and, uh, this will be for the, I guess, the regular meeting of the board on, uh, sorry, October twenty-seventh. Uh, trustee Flynn, you were absent, I think, or was that? No, everybody's here.
Yeah, I was only late for six minutes.
Oh, yeah, knowing you were late.
Yeah. They checked the...
Okay, everybody check this, is there any, uh...
Mayor, can I just, want, not to nitpick here, but is on page three and the subsequent page four, um, where we refer to Gold Park, Memorial Park, and White Church Cemetery, is the official name Little White Church Cemetery?
Yes.
Okay, so if we could just insert Little there, and then also on the, on the vote on page four, uh, Little as well.
Okay, Liz will note that, inserting the word Little in front of, um, White, or Little White Church Cemetery. Any other, uh, typos or corrections? Okay, thanks, Bill, then I'll take a motion to accept the minutes for October twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, uh, regular Board of Trustees meeting as, as amended. Is there a motion? Trustee Golio, second trustee Russillo, discussion, all in favor? And those minutes are adopted, thank you. Okay, um, any, uh, reports or announcements from trustees? Bill, I'll start with you, we'll work down.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank, um, the Boy Scout, uh, Troop Twenty-Four. On, uh, Sunday, uh, October twenty-fifth, actually, three, three members, actually two dads and an Eagle Scout, it was, uh, Nick Sarancini, Sarancini and his dad, Chris, and Steve Sudak actually, um, worked and did a nice job clearing the path up on, on Spoiler's Run there. And, uh, I ran there today, actually, and in the past, it was kind of a little bit of a challenge, if you will, but, um, they really cleared it up nice and, uh, really did a great job, so I wanted to give them a shout-out and thank them, the scouts, for really giving back to the community in so many positive ways, um, and this is just one example. The reason only three of them were there that day is because the rest of the troop, which, uh, with the scoutmaster, Ed Dalio, uh, assistant scoutmaster, Rob Mull, and , uh, advanced chair, Kim Hoard, um, took fourteen senior scouts from Dobbs Ferry, Troop Twenty-Four, to attend a meet and greet event, where they helped escort over sixty veterans to and from their party. So, uh, you know, they, they have, um, they are the, the one troop that's asked to do it every year, and they participate every year. It is a veteran event, so, again, shout-out to, to Troop Twenty-Four for a great job and being such a positive influence in the community.
Great, thanks for that, Bill. Donna, anything?
Uh, Joe, we just had another meeting this morning on Safe Roots to School Grant. The consultant was there. This meeting included the Safe Roots to School, um, committee from the, from, from, uh, the, the, um, Parents Committee, the, uh, P T S A's Committee on Safe Roots to School, the Boardroom Safety Coalition was there, uh, made some really good inputs, some really good progress. Uh, this draft document will be done, presented to the D O T for comment, after which time the whole, the project, the project, the report will be, um, held at a public hearing for more input before the final document is done, so that is moving along, uh, very nicely. We've got some really good ideas coming out of this.
Excellent, thanks, Donna. Vic, you're good, okay. Jeff?
I have a couple of things. At the library on November twentieth, from eleven a.m. to one p.m., is an affordable health insurance workshop. Uh, it is offered by the Westchester County Health Department, so if you're having issues in terms of affordable health insurance, it would be a great place to be. Again, November twentieth from eleven to one, uh, come learn all the ins and outs about the low-cost, quality health plans available to you, your family, and your employees via experienced New York State of Health navigators. Registration is recommended, but walk-ins are welcome, and the best thing is the cost, it's free. Moving along to the Dobbs Ferry Historical Society, uh, they are, they have been looking at different, uh, nationalities, if I can do that, and have done programs about the history of that nationality in, in Dobbs Ferry. So on Saturday, November fourteenth, the, they will present Grapes and Olives, a celebration of the Italians of Dobbs Ferry. Join us for antipasto wine and reminiscing about the Italian sights, sounds, and flavors of our village. Again, Saturday, November fourteenth, from three p.m. to seven p.m. at the Mead House, where the Historical Society is based, at twelve Elm Street. There is a suggested donation of twenty dollars, uh, at the door, but nobody's going to kick you out if you don't, can't donate that. Uh, and finally, someone, and I think maybe Liz, might have left this for me. And finally, someone, and I think maybe Liz, might have left this for me. At the, at last meeting, we voted to support the county-wide ban on bags, and it made the front page of Section 3 of the Journal of News last Saturday, so we'll hope that it comes to be.
Excellent, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
If you're Irish, are you allowed to go to that thing?
Just name, just--
Talking about two Irish, all right. Thank you.
I have one thing.
Benny?
The Dobbs Ferry Youth Council wanted everyone to know that Ausley's Youth Coalition is sponsoring a workshop or a discussion on November 12th, Thursday, at Ausley High School Library at 7:30, and the discussion will be what you need to know about the problem of opiate medications and heroin. It seems that more and more problems are arising as a result of these opiate medications, and this discussion will be an open forum to discuss what the problems are, and what, hopefully, maybe some solutions are. So, that's November 12th, at Ausley High School Library at 7:30.
I'd like to just stress, it is a big problem now, in the county, and it would be a really good thing to, to attend that meeting and hopefully get some good information on it. It's a problem these days.
And I wanted to just, if anyone saw this piece on Sixty Minutes about this, what's different now than was, say, in the sixties when heroin was-- These kids are starting on prescription pain pills. So, just be careful, you know, if you have prescription pills around your house or whatever, it doesn't take much for them to get started, and so, just be careful.
Thanks, Benny.
Will you go first, because yours is first?
Okay. Oh, I just have two things here. One is that the Veterans Day Breakfast Celebration is tomorrow, Wednesday, November 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Embassy Community Center on Palisade Street. Enjoy a full breakfast of pancakes, eggs, sausage, juice, coffee, and tea. It's $5 unless you're a veteran, and veterans eat for free. They get a lot of people for this, I know I'm going to be there, and I think, you know, a lot of people are going to show up, so it's a great way to honor our veterans, and there's a lot of activity down there, and it's, it's a big, big deal for them. So, if you have any questions, call 693-7792, or 693-0024 for, for more information, the Veterans Day Breakfast tomorrow. Okay, Kathy?
And then, senior Thanksgiving's party is called Party and Foul Shooting Contest. All senior citizens are invited to attend this event, which will include food, door prizes, entertainment, and refreshments. There will be a foul shooting contest to win a free turkey. I don't even want to know this, but, also, please bring canned goods to be given to the food pantry, and the flea market, which is a lot of fun, will always be open, will also be open. The cost is $3, and it's Tuesday, November 24th, from 11:00 to 1:00 at the Embassy Center. To register for the Dobbs Ferry Nutrition Center, which is between 10:00 and 1:00 o'clock, please call 693-0787 weekdays, or call the Recreation Department at 693-0024. So, it should be fun, the seniors with guns. There you go.
Just to be clear, what kind of, how do you spell foul? Shooting, F-O-U-L?
No, F-O, no, no, no.
F-O-U-L.
It's the turkey celebration. Get on board, Jeff.
Okay, Kathy, thanks, and just in closing here, I wrote a letter to Coach Jim Moran, wishing the Dobbs Ferry football team good luck last weekend at their quarterfinal game, not releasing that they actually had a bye. So, that good luck letter from the board, and from the village, and from the staff extends to this weekend, so we want to again wish the Dobbs Ferry football team all the best of luck, Coach Jim Moran, the players, the cheerleaders, the water boys, the fans, the parents, the Dobbs Ferry School District, Superintendent Lisa Brady, the Board of Education, the Dobbs Ferry Touchdown Club, everybody who supports this program, which is a, you know, a big program in Dobbs Ferry, this is a big deal. The game is in Kingston, New York, at Deed Stadium, this coming Saturday, November 14th, 3:00 p.m. Of course, this village is so proud of all of the youth in Dobbs Ferry, whether you play a sport on the field, or you, you're on stage, or the work that you do in the classroom, you are, you make us also very, very proud, and when you have a, a group of kids and supporters that, that achieve at this level, you definitely want to recognize it, and it really makes you really, really proud as a community. So, best of luck to the, to the Eagles this weekend in their, in their quarterfinal game. Hopefully, they can make it up to Syracuse. Okay, thanks very much. Comments tonight were really great, really appreciate your, your comments. We'll be back at this in a couple of weeks, but there will be no further business. Meeting is adjourned.